Hello. Karen's here.
Hello.
Welcome, and I think we are going to welcome to this second legislative dinner this year for specific reasons which are on the agenda. We have one, two, three, four, five agenda items to discuss. So we should probably start with introductions. Start with this slide.
My name is James Brown. I am a chief of collaborative services for the public safety department right now. I'm in for our director of public safety. Who is that?
Chief of what?
It's a department that we have within public safety called collaborative services. And our public safety is both police and public.
Sorry. Harold, the city manager.
Eugene May, city attorney.
Shakita Yambra, city council.
Susie Adal Lufering, city council.
Erin McCormack, city council.
Erin McCormack, state rep for House District 11.
Jennifer Parenti, state rep for House District 19, East Longmont and surrounding areas.
Jenny Marsh, city manager.
And Valerie Dodd, the executive director of Next Lane, Longmont's internet provider.
Dave Hornbacher, assistant city manager of utilities and public works.
Greenwall Transportation Plan Manager.
Great. Oh, and there's Sandy Seaman, assistant city manager.
I'm ignoring him.
So why was this called? Because I know we've already had a legislative dinner, which was really a lot of fun, right, Karen?
It was, and I was curious as to why it was called, so thank you.
Actually, council has been having some concerns with some of the bills that have been written in the past in 2022, 2021 that affect our ability to, that affect local jurisdiction a little bit, and I would turn that over to James Brown and staff, but...
I just want to say one thing also.
Okay.
Well, also that we've learned that the timeline for writing and submitting bills is more now than we traditionally have our legislative minutes, and so maybe you won't carry the bills, we can help us in talking to people who might carry the bills. And so I think that's why we wanted to shift and have this meeting now instead of when you're in session.
Right. Earlier is better, for sure.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you for that, Erin. You said what I was going to say. So the first thing on our agenda is legislation that affects public safety, and I'm going to turn this over to Harold and James Brown.
So I'm going to talk pretty high level as we're moving through this because we did not have a department on some of these issues last year, and I think what we're finding is that many of the things we're talking about are really embedded in multiple bills that have been passed over time. But to start off on a few key issues that we're dealing with, so Eugene, I believe it was 217 that really got into officers and, excuse me, you know, when they're involved in a use of force case or not a use of force case. And really, the big piece in that legislation that's really challenging for cities and for us is that there's a component in that legislation that says that if a judgment, if there's a judgment against a public safety officer, then they have to, in a serious bodily injury case, they can lose their post certification, and in a non-SBI case, then they can lose their certification for a year. And the challenge that we're finding in this is that's really relating to what occurs in the civil system.
In what?
In the civil system, in civil trials, so it's not just criminal. So what occurs in that situation is, and we've had to deal with this, where you actually have a case that as you look at it and you review it, everything's done like it needs to be, but if that goes into the civil court system and they literally awarded the plaintiff $10, that's a judgment against the officer, which then goes to, you know, their license requirements. And what we're finding in that is, I would just say that the attorneys have figured it out. And so it's becoming more and more of a challenge for us because we're, as a city, literally faced with someone's career and what the civil judgment means, and it's forcing cities to make pretty tough decisions because you don't want someone to lose their career. Even as you evaluate the situation, everything makes perfect sense. And so for us, I think in talking to the council, that is something we wanted to talk to you all in terms of really seeing how we can adjust that language because it's not a criminal offense that we're talking about. And you can't, no one knows how jury's going to react to anything, and so it's a significant issue for us. So much so that when you look at, you know, the impacts to our staff is, I think we could say pretty clearly, we're actually losing people in terms of public safety officers because of the impacts to them. And, you know, we've lost a lot of people that have gone to different areas just because they don't want to lose their career. I personally, in a situation, we had someone that was a long tenure officer here, great, you know, was in a situation and decided to retire. But the fact that we're letting the civil court system actually make a decision that impacts somebody's career and it doesn't really, you know, who knows what jury's going to say, is a significant issue for us.
And I, oh, I was going to just follow up because I know this is that bill that we did talk about, and my question then and still now that even though the attorney general came out with his stance, that doesn't help that kind of, you're in a defensive position when this happens, and the cost to city budgets to settle a case rather than have it go to court is really the issue, one of the biggest issues, is that you're not going to chance losing that officer when they did absolutely everything by the book.
Right.
So the cost out of the city's pocket. When we talked about this before and we were asking, I was asking those questions about in practice, were, is Longmont talking with all the other cities to come up with kind of a unified approach to this? And have there been any discussions on how to rewrite this? And, yeah, because these are questions for our judiciary committee that works on these things, and so I do understand, and you did a really good job explaining to me before.
So I think the, A, I think in terms of what the attorney general said was less than specific enough to really provide some clarity.
Security, like, yeah.
I think the other piece is that the ultimate decision on that actually rests with the post board. And so, you know, that's the clarity in this, too, and in terms of getting guidance in terms of how we're going to look at that, we still haven't really seen any guidance from the post, so, you know, I just, I think I would just say that in terms of what we're seeing, that wasn't anything that made us go home.
Didn't help. No.
Well, and I guess my question is, and this bill was passed before I joined the legislature, so...
Me, too.
Yeah. I'm trying to...
That's okay, we're good.
Well, so I'm keying in on the language that you're using. You use the language can result in the loss of post certification, not will.
So if I can...
And so, I mean, I think that that's important, right? No one is necessarily saying that every police officer who has a judgment against them, particularly ones for $10, is automatically going to lose their post certification. It just means that it can go up for review.
So...
So then the question in my mind is, what are, what are the triggers for that review? Is it their supervisors that trigger the review? Is it the post board that triggers the review? Who triggers the review?
So in the language that we're particularly, we're referencing, I think it's not, it's more, it's more direct than that, and I'll pull it up here, and it's in section 24-31904 of the bill. And basically, it says here, reference the judgment, and there's other pieces to it, too, but the post board shall permanently revoke the peace officer certification. The post board shall not, under any circumstances, reinstate the peace officer certification or grant new certification to the peace officer unless the peace officer is exonerated by a court. And so when, and the way that our legal advisors are interpreting that is there's not, there's no wiggle room in there. And so from a law enforcement perspective is, like, I think we can all agree on the intent of the law, right? Like, I'd be the first one to say if we had an officer who was using excessive force, that they shouldn't be a police officer anymore, and that's not, that's not what is causing us the issue. It's in those cases where our people did everything that they're supposed to do, and sometimes even when you do everything right, bad things can still happen. And we're just, we're putting our officers in a possible situation that in those cases, even if, even if by the letter of the law, everything that they did was right and was legal, and they'd been cleared through the legal system, and their actions were justified, they can still, and oftentimes are subjected to a civil lawsuit where it's a gamble. You don't know how a jury is going to decide on that, and if a jury were to award anything in favor on a use of force case in a judgment, then we feel like the language is pretty strict in that what the consequences of that will mean. And so it's really, we're kind of stuck in that position of not being able to, even though when we look at it, like, we get everything right, and our officer, you know, performed exceptional...
Right, and you wouldn't change a thing.
We wouldn't change a thing.
Wouldn't change a thing.
Right, but we still can't.
Yeah.
We can't risk something going wrong, and now that officer's career and that officer's likelihood is gone.
And therefore, those officers don't want to risk coming here.
Exactly. And so since this bill has passed, we've lost almost half of our authorized strength in police officers. Not all of them are directly related to this, but we've, we've lost some really great tenured officers who have either decided that they don't want to do this profession anymore because it's not, it's not worth the risk that they're taking, not only the risk of obviously bodily harm every day, but now, now the risk associated with some of the consequences here. So they're either getting out of professional altogether, or they're moving to other states to be police officers in other states. And it's been extremely challenging from that aspect of this policy.
That was helpful clarification, so thank you.
And the will depends on serious bodily injury or not, and that there's a distinction of that.
So that if it's serious bodily injury, it's a permanent loss of your post certification. If it's a non-serious bodily injury, then it's at least a year. So either way, it's a true and less impact to our people.
And generally, to give you an example, and this is based on pretty factual circumstances. So you have a situation where you have a serious domestic violence case where, when you look at the individual completely battered and bloody, literally, I guess, waterboarded with alcohol, and afraid the person's going to come back, so then you start trying to search because you want to protect the victim in this case. And if you were to utilize the K-9, and then the K-9 bites.
I saw the film.
And the person, you know, is hiding, officer's out there on his own, that immediately triggers serious bodily injury, even though you can clearly document the not responding, hiding, evading. And then all of a sudden, you have this officer that is now cast into this different classification. And so that, for us, is, you know, part of what is challenging because we were talking about this earlier, it's, in many cases, it's easy to look at this and watch this and dissect it, but these things happen in seconds.
Yeah.
You know, I think generally, the other thing that we're seeing, and we really appreciate the changes that were made in terms of vehicle deaths in this session, so part of that when I talked about, you aren't part of the legislature when they pass this, but...
Yeah.
I think generally, in looking at what are the unintended consequences of legislation as it's passed, and to give you an example, while it's corrected, but one of the challenges that we were having when car deaths were moved from felonies to misdemeanors is, we definitely saw an uptick, and a couple of examples, you know, we have one individual that was charged with 14 auto deaths in Longmont alone, 32 failure-toappear-related offenses, five failure to comply, and three eluding, and couldn't arrest him, and so they keep, keep committing those crimes, and we have other cases with this. And so part of the challenge is that we're seeing as things are reduced, and we, and our folks are talking to people on the streets as they're engaging with them. They are very clear with us where they know the lines exist, and they push those lines. And what happens is, is at the end of the day, our community is continuing to have to struggle with dealing with these issues, and when you have officers that are engaging in this and they can't arrest, or they have, what's the bond?
PR bond.
PR bonds. And so they're not in jail, it becomes really difficult in terms of communicating with our community when they're telling us, you're not enforcing the law, you're not keeping us safe, and we see that in different areas, and I think probably one of the most significant issues wasn't here, it was actually in Louisville where Louisville police have been dealing with an individual for a substantial amount of time. They arrested them, the judge gives a PR bond, the individual goes to Denver, actually kills someone, and then Louisville's getting sued because the individual wasn't put in jail. And those are issues that we're dealing with on a constant basis and trying to figure things out. And then when you look at drug offenses and how they were moved for felonies, you know, what we know is people are now keeping less than what the threshold is on them as they're dealing, so that if they get caught, it's a misdemeanor, and it may mean that there's a stash somewhere close by. But, you know, as we're looking at these issues, and especially as it's related to juveniles, I don't know if you've seen what we've been dealing with in our community. The lack of accountability has actually made it more difficult for us to get juveniles into our diversion programs. Because, you know, before, if there was the threat of a felony, they were more willing to engage in our re-line programs and our LCJP and go through the process. But what we're finding now is they're choosing not to. In many cases, their parents are not encouraging them to go into it, and you have parents that do, but we're seeing parents that are saying, no, take it to court, penalty's not significant enough. And so what happens is, is when you don't have that accountability built into the process and you can't intervene into the early intervention programs, what happens is, is it continues to simmer. And then the simmer explodes on us, and we've seen a couple of cases here recently, more than a couple with juveniles, where they never had the ability to engage because they wouldn't, and there was no reason for them to engage. And I think the bigger message is, in all of these, we don't disagree with the intent, but we think what gets lost is what are the unintended consequences for the community? We were in an LEDP meeting, and the superintendent was saying, not only is your police force dealing with these individuals in the community, we can't deal with them in our school system, and it's disrupting the entire school system. And so in many ways, it's handicapping us in terms of what we can do really for the safety of our community. And I think more importantly, it handicaps parents because in many cases, parents struggle with the same issue, and if there's nothing there to force that early intervention, parents are also struggling. And, you know, we can say now that we're having significant issues, and we can go back to, we just can't do anything. And another example, we had a grand case where, after one of our significant incidents, where literally, I was in a meeting with him on that, this was tangentially connected to it, it took 45 minutes to figure out how you can charge, and these were assault weapons and handguns, and it took full leadership in public safety and a legal advisor. They ended up charging on a gang or defense. And then many of the charges were actually thrown out based on different laws in play. And so I think generally, the message for me is, you know, we would love to be part of conversations, and we're here to really kind of talk about the unintended consequences because I think we're feeling that on a regular basis, and I think our council is hearing that on a regular basis from their constituents.
If I could just provide a couple, like, specific examples of kind of making some of those unintended consequences. So when we talk about specifically juveniles with our intervention programs, you know, before, when we had the potential consequence of a felony charge or something a little bit more significant, getting the, you know, we get the courts involved, then that's when the courts can start mandating things like counseling or mental health treatment or those type of things. When we've moved away from that, and it's now, most of the intervention we're doing is more on that kind of voluntary compliance standpoint, we don't have a mechanism or the pieces in place to force some of those things that, right, because we're never going to be able to solve the problem by putting someone in jail, right? So it's about trying to identify what the root causes of those problems are, and trying to put solutions in place or try to get help to solve what those root problems are so that the criminal behavior stops, but we lose a lot of the ability to have that leverage. And even on the adult side, another good example with some of that changes in the drug laws, is we have a program here in Longmont, and it's a program that's utilized in jurisdictions throughout Colorado. It's called our LEAP program. It's a diversion program specifically geared towards those who have substance abuse problems. So what would happen, would an officer would contact somebody on the street who is a user, who has possession of user amounts of narcotics, that would usually carry, you know, a felony charge with it. What we'd be able to do with that is, in lieu of the felony charge, if you agree to participate in this program, then that felony charge won't happen. But it was always kind of that motivation for them to kind of participate in the program. So we've lost that ability, so now we're still engaging, we're still trying to get them to engage in the program, we're still giving some people who have reached that point that they're like, well, I want to participate in the program, and I want to get help for my, for my substance abuse problem. But what we've lost is that motivator that oftentimes would get the foot in the door to hopefully start someone towards a path to sobriety and changing those behaviors, again, that are creating the criminal behaviors that we're seeing. So that's just a couple of examples.
Just to help me understand, people who commit misdemeanors don't get arrested? They don't go to court?
Well...
That doesn't make sense to me. I mean, some misdemeanor offenses are pretty significant crimes.
They're issued a ticket and a summons to go to court. So, and really, the, one of the strongest motivators of correcting that behavior or that consequence that's over their head, if you will, is the actual act of going to jail, and then...
But you can go to jail for misdemeanor offenses.
Well, and there's more things at play in that that isn't just the law changes when it comes to going to jail for misdemeanor charges. In Volvo County, we're unique, and that's, we're dealing with jail population issues and the ability to take people to jail, and because of that, it restricts our ability. We're limited to certain offenses that we can take people to jail for, and then the backside of that, too, is with the bond reforms and everything like that, it's with the PR bonds oftentimes, or I shouldn't say oftentimes, but in many cases, we'll have people that will take to jail before we're even done processing the paperwork and replacing everything, but they're already out. And so, and those are, those are different things. I mean, it's kind of the, I think Harold started off by saying there's multiple factors at play, right? And it's kind of just created this, for lack of a better term, it's almost a perfect storm in our community that is creating a lot of challenges for law enforcement. So it's, it's the reforms on law enforcement, it's the changes in the crimes themselves, it's the backing of the criminal justice system, it's the jail pop, or the jail population issues we're dealing with, and the ability to take people to... So it's a combination of all of them that's kind of playing into it.
You know, it's court processing times, I know, that play in where they just can't, they're having to let people go because they have nowhere else for them to get through the system faster.
And, you know, another one that ties into this that I think everyone's trying to figure out is, you know, when you can do search warrants and what that really means, because what you're really dependent on, and a lot of these actually boil down to the judicial system in terms of how are they going to act in certain cases? So in terms of the legislation, what we're depending on is whether or not a judge will make an exception to the, what is it, seven to seven?
Yeah.
The seven to seven timeframe and search warrants. So if you have somebody that has committed a crime, a DB, and they're not in their home, but they're in a third party's home, you actually have to get a search warrant to go in, even if you know they're...
A second, a second search warrant?
Yeah, so...
Because it's not the primary interest.
Even if we have, have an arrest warrant for an individual, and you can be in an arrest warrant for a homicide, it doesn't matter what it is, the arrest warrant gives us the legal authority to enter their home, to take them into custody, but if they, if they're, let's say they're at a friend's house or something, it's a third-party residence, that would be an example of where a search warrant would be required. And so, and a lot of it kind of depends on, we're going to have to see how the judges, the judges interpret it and whether or not that would constitute an exception to that. But, so in theory, we could have a wanted individual in a third-party residence, it's 10 o'clock at night, we know he's in there, or we know she's in there, but we may or may not be able to get a search warrant, it just kind of depends. We're not going to know until some of these cases come up and we see how, how they're being handled.
Was that in that same, the search warrant, there, or we, that was in a different one, wasn't it?
That was in a different one.
Yeah, that was recently passed, it's Senate Bill 23254. So I think it was in this last session, it was the no-knock warrant bill.
Right.
Limiting the no-knock warrants and then reducing the search warrants to be executed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM.
Right.
And the verbiage in there is, unless authorized by a judge for good cause. The question that comes is...
That's the...
We don't know at this point what is going to be interpreted as good cause. Now, our hope is...
And it could depend on the individual judge.
Exactly.
I think it's the guy wanted that way, though the last thing you want is the legislature to dictate those terms to you.
Well, I mean, that, what you're saying is, that's, that's the only wiggle room there is.
Yeah, because it's kind of like, I mean, we've had issues on bonds, and again, not legislated, but, you know, we've had some fairly significant crimes where bonds were pretty low.
And that's the judge's discretion, right?
Correct.
So how, how...
That's why we're saying, it's sort of, it's like you're getting hit from so many different handles.
I've heard that from the DA as well, like, how, like, what pressures are there in the system on that side of it? I don't know, like, what, somebody tell me, what, what do we do about that as well?
I think that's a hard part. I mean, if you look at, if you look at the Louisville case, so you have a city that's fighting a lawsuit not based on the decision that their officer's made, but on the decision that the judicial system made. And I think I made a comment to you is, you know, in our case, when qualified immunity was stripped, you know, it makes sense, but, you know, there's the same thing where you still have qualified immunity on this other component, not to, you know, attack crimes, but, you know, there's a piece of this is, is how are you accountable for your decisions, and what is the impact of your decisions on a community? And I think that's kind of what we struggle with.
This is why judges are put up for reelection, or at least reappointment on the ballots. And so in my mind, the answer is to ensure that these kinds of judicial results are noted.
You know what? What's interesting is on that, it's kind of a double-edged sword. So if you look to the east coast, it is not uncommon in the briefing tribunal to see... So if you look to the East Coast, it, it is not uncommon in the Griblet Tribune to see something in the newspaper about this is who was arrested and here's what they're arrested for and here's what their bonds are like. Uh, I'm not saying we want to go there, but you know, at the same time, we have to work with the judicial system and everyone has to work within that. So there's a certain point of, uh, you know, are you getting into a law diminishing returns in terms of how you're approaching this? And, and the other thing is many of these cases can be discussed, uh, because of, you know, what's in place. So it's kind of hard to, and, and even I, I mean, involved in this, I think it's hard for us to know and really make these decisions when you're, when you're, when you're looking at the judges because you just, you know, don't know kind of how it's going and how they're working through the process. So, you know, that's when, there's pieces all over the place. And then when you look at the Supreme Court decision on bail and that now, you know, you can't, everyone has to have a bail. Uh, even if, you know, you can be as absurd as a serial killer, well, now they have to have a bail. Well, now you're dependent on who's going to make that decision and how much is, is really in play. And so I think it's really, the overall message is, you know, we want to help, we want to talk through this, we want to talk about what are the unintended consequences. At the same time, you know, you know, based on decisions that are being made in multiple arenas, it's, it's also really trying to figure out how do we have the tools necessary to actually keep people from going to jail? And how do we get them into our diversion programs and catch them on day one versus letting it continue to perfectly? Because most of what we've spent from a budget perspective in our public safety department hasn't been for officers. Uh, we've created the LEAP Core Group, which now we've added our four team, which is focusing on mental health and then the work that James oversees to kind of engage in that situation in a different way. We've completely revamped how we deal with juveniles and we have our Rewind Program where we actually, when they come in, we go through an evaluation system and, you know, take them through mental health services, substance abuse programs and all of these issues. And whoever fighting is just, they're just less likely because you don't have that consequence that helps push over the edge.
What, what generally is the percentage of, uh, young folks that could potentially go that, choose that route? And what was it before? What is it now? Like how?
I, I can get that too.
I'm just curious, um, that, because you're, you're right, that's the, the alternative path that we're trying to steer these kids towards. And, um, if you, you don't have, um, that pressure...
Does it have to be an alternative path? I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, they're...
But I guess that's my point.
The, the, the fact that they used to have, um, they were at a crossroads that they could go through the criminal justice system and you're a potential felony on your record rather, or right at that point, you have this alternative path.
But my point is like, why make it an alternative? Do, do the judges, does the system not have the discretion to just say all offenders under the age of eighteen will go through this program regardless?
If, if they become part of the, the court system, uh, yes, too. I mean...
I mean, all, even misdemeanors go through courts.
Well, so the difference is in our Rewind Program is when, when you, what we're trying to do is intervene before they go into the, the court system. And, and so you, you don't have somebody with a record per se. And so to, to JB's point, it literally is the officer has the discretion to go, I can file this felony charge on you or we can get you into the Rewind Program because we also all know that once you kind of move in through that court system, outcomes change quite a bit. And so our intent is to divert before they ever get there.
But they have to choose.
But they have to have a choice. They don't want to.
Yeah. I know. It's, I mean, it's...
Well, I mean, they don't because there are people who committed a crime and the courts find that they committed a crime, even if it's misdemeanor crime. I mean, the system has broad discretion on what they can do.
Then they're charged. That's what it is.
They can charge them and they can force them to go through the, you know, these types of counseling and diversion programs.
One of, and one of the biggest drivers with our Rewinding Program though is, is trying to do that, that diversion, uh, before the court because...
Sure.
It's challenging. Once they, kind of what Harold says, once they enter into, into the criminal justice system, it, it can be very difficult sometimes and have lifelong consequences, which is why we're really focused on our youth with our Rewind Program. Can we intervene beforehand and then, and then in that diversion prevent them from even, from ever being charged in the criminal justice system? So that way it doesn't impact, uh, their ability to get to college, doesn't impact their ability to serve in the military, those type of things. Um, and divert that, that path that, or kind of at that intersection path and let's, let's divert it, you know, to a path that leads to success versus, um, you know, the, the other potential path.
This is a side question, um, to help you visualize how that program does where are there folks that have been through that program that also come back to work with you to help get kids convinced to go through that way, you know?
Almost like champions of the program?
Yeah.
Um, off the top of my head with Rewind, um...
Well, it's, it's new. So this is, this is only two to three, I mean, two to three years old. I can tell you in the work that we did at the youth center, that has happened.
Yeah, I was just thinking out loud that, that once they, if they can actually see that, oh...
We, we have seen that quite a bit with our restorative justice programs as well too.
Exactly.
That's probably the one that we see it the most of. Um, and my personal experience as an officer with, uh, participating like in restorative justice, I've had not only people come back to, uh, them participating in the program as a volunteer, I've had people approach me on the street and talk about, you know, how grateful they were for the opportunity to go through that program. Um, and, and I mean, I realize the challenges when we take a look at, uh, statewide and, and drafting laws and changes to laws and everything like that, you know, obviously my perspective that I'm talking about is here in my community with, with my police. So I, I don't want to ignore those challenges because I understand that a hundred percent. Uh, but obviously the perspective that I'm speaking from is, is in my experience here in Longmont, my experience with, with our police department. I've seen the, the effects that it's had, that all of this has had on, on our police department. And, um, they've been, uh, extremely consequential. Uh, and you know, our, our mantra as a police department was that we, that the people we hire to become police officers, uh, we are looking for the best and the brightest and we, uh, it, it's challenging, it's challenging to retain our people, it's challenging to, to hire the caliber of people that we want. Because of all, all these factors and, and just the everyday street life for an officer, it's, uh, I, I've never seen, uh, morale and, like I know morale is kind of a, a fickle term, but I've never seen it as bad as it is now. Uh, the, the ability to, uh, get our officers and, you know, out there doing the things we're asking them to do, it, it's an everyday challenge. Uh, and it's, you know, kind of living through that cycle and seeing it, it's, um, yeah, it's, it's sad.
Well, that's, but it's your perspective. It's so important to end, I really do hear you and knowing that, I mean, I've been here thirty years and to see and be so proud of how our public safety department has become a model for not only the state, but the nation. There's so many things that we have done right here, um, that your feedback, uh, hits hard because I don't want our town to be like some towns that really do need a whole lot of work. Uh, we haven't typically been in that category. So I, I absolutely hear you and I, um, it does concern me, um, that we may not be able to draw that caliber of person because we need our public safety department. We absolutely do. And, um, so, uh, I, I would, I would love to know, you know, we don't necessarily have to get into the nitty gritty tonight, but, um, I have to go back and look at two seventeen, I believe with Representative Herod that was on that bill or something. So I want to see who else was... But is there any, yeah, that's the one problem. Um, so I think I had said at our previous meeting that I was going to reach out to Representative Weissman, the Chair of the Judiciary Committee. Um, and that was in the, was that this past spring? I can't remember when we met.
Uh, that may have been around...
The fall?
No.
I don't even know.
I can't remember, but it was, it was really close to the session, so we...
So whatever I got back from him, um, was not sufficient enough to, to reassure you that there's something happening. Um, so I will do that again. And also, um, this, this, um, two, two fifty-four, uh, that one just came out. So it has gone, the, the no-knock warrant, it was signed this summer?
Yeah.
So it's just out in effect. Um, and you already have run into, or, or it's more, you can see where the problems are.
Right. So you know, one of the, the unique challenges of being a law enforcement officer, it's the nature of it and it's, the impact of it I think is greater right now because we've seen so much change in a short period of time.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, when a new court case, uh, gets decided, it, it change, it can change our processes overnight.
Yeah.
Uh, the Supreme Court with, with some of the recent rulings that they've had, changes. So what we used to do yesterday is now different today. So when, when these new laws, you know, get passed, these are some of the things we've got to start looking at. We got to figure out the potential impact and the changes we've got to make immediately. And we've got to retrain everybody.
Everybody's got to know now.
Everybody's got to know now because the, and you know, law changes are one, court cases another, because that's what drives everything we do is that the courts are telling us, you know, how they're interpreting these laws, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And when that changes, it's a cascading effect through law enforcement. Um, and so, you know, again, I think we're feeling it more now than we, than we have in the past because there's been so much change in a shorter period of time and in the, the court cases. And so some of this is, we do our best to interpret what the courts may do, but we, we don't know yet because we haven't, there hasn't been a case to go through yet to give us that clear, uh, guidance and a clear direction.
Right.
Well, and to be honest with you, your jobs, you know, compared to what we're dealing, are incredibly hard because I would be the first to say that we, we see things that have happened in other communities. We're sitting there going, what are we watching? What are we seeing? And, and I think that's the piece where we're just saying, we're here as a resource and we would be happy to kind of, if you're, if you're seeing something to go, okay, you know, we hit the point. Can we help? You know, here's the other side of this because, you know, on the warrant piece, the no-knock warrants didn't affect us at all because we don't do them. Uh, it was really just the piece associated with the search warrants. We're unusual. I mean, uh, I think you're seeing more cities that are moving away from the no, no-knock warrants, but...
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know that I can say there are all, I, I would say that no-knock warrants are more of a obsolete, uh, uh...
Right.
...tactic or practice that's used in law enforcement.
Yeah.
I don't know that I can tell you what percentage of departments use it, but you know, we're always evolving and always changing. And, and you know, that's one of the tough things about law enforcement too, to kind of Harold's point, right, is there's not a, necessarily like a nationwide, this is how everything is done. And so, and, and we get it and that's the reality. I mean, nothing, nothing upsets a good cop more than a cop who is blatantly violating the, the laws and disgracing, uh, the profession and their duty. And, uh, I will tell you as, as a leader in the police department, zero tolerance for that. I would never, if, if we, if we have someone like that, then they can't be a cop anymore. And it, it, every police officer who is worth their salt will say the same thing because all it does is makes our job, makes our job harder, uh, because we understand, you know, that kind of knee jerk reaction, I can't even say knee jerk, but the reaction to that is, well, we've got a, we've got to write laws to prevent that from happening where the, the majority of it is kind of like, we would never allow that to happen to begin with. And so like to Harold's point, we get it, we understand, we want to be a, we want to be a resource and we want to, we want to help mitigate some of that. And the reality is, is we suffer the consequences of, of what some of our, our counterparts in other areas do. And that's unfortunate because we don't, and again, I'm speaking in the perspective of Longmont Police Department, um, we do things the right way and we have done things the right way for, for decades. And, and like I said, it's just, it's unfortunate the impact it has on the, uh, men and women who have dedicated their lives to this profession that are now looking at it saying, we, we hire good caliber people, people who can work, you know, professional jobs in other capacities. And now they're looking at it and saying, I'm better off doing that because I, I can no longer, the risk of doing this job is no longer, um, worth the, the value or, or, uh, the, the service I'm trying to provide.
So thank you very much. Um, I, I just want to real fast, see if any counselors have any, um, comments that they want to make toward this subject?
No, I, I feel staff has laid it out very nicely.
Very nicely. Um, I do want to say that I think that the bills that I'm looking at that had to do with the GR are House Bill nineteen twelve twenty-five. And I know that was in nineteen, but we had the pandemic. And I think these, the result of that bill surfaced after we got through the, the horrible pandemic.
Which, what was the title of that?
It was a concerning prohibiting the use of monetary bail for certain levels of offenses, except in certain circumstances. And because it wasn't monetary, it was PR, if I interpreted right. The other one is House Bill twenty-two ten sixty-seven. So, thank you. Um, our next thing on the agenda is actually something that I put on with because I knew Representative DePlo was going to be here and is the transportation event fee to fund RTD front range passenger rail. Oh wait, there was timeline for state court cases.
Yeah, we talked about that as well. I, I recognize that it's an issue.
Oh, okay.
And our jail is full. Unless there's something else you'd like to share, but I, yeah, I felt like it was...
Yeah. No, we're, oh, um, clearing the slate faster. And the reason I brought it up was that, uh, I had heard, and I think it was, um, council had heard this from our municipal judge, Frick, that he said that because of the pandemic, they were so backed up that, um, if I believe what he said correctly, if I heard him correctly, that we didn't do night court in, uh, the state of Colorado and that perhaps in order to clear that slate, he would like to receive night court. I don't know if it's the same issue, but I thought I'd bring that up.
Sorry.
So my time's up?
No, I, I was rude.
That's where I move over to Widdy.
I didn't turn my feet off. Sorry.
Um, and I, uh, I am on the front range passenger rail board and been involved with RTD for years and years and years. Um, and, uh, we're having some movement through, uh, some of the people I'm networking with from, um, the governor's office all the way down to municipal elected officials that I personally cannot bring a passenger, uh, a passenger rail, front range passenger rail district, uh, tax to our residents if the state, this is just for your information, um, unless Governor Polis is not ready to put some big money into this from the state level.
Yeah.
So what I have proposed, and we're, we're going to have conversations on front range passenger rail district and, uh, North Resonators and conditions, et cetera. Never even talked to Dr. Cobb about it, is that we for, have an event fee for transportation on everybody who uses our roads. For example, on every ski ticket, uh, a fee, a transportation fee, so not a tax, so we don't get into tabor. Uh, and, um, on every stockship ticket, on every rental car in our state. Um, and so that we can fund what we need to fund in the state without going back to the residents and saying, you need to pay more. I know it's never been done on a state level, that districts can do this, but Long, uh, Colorado's always been first in a lot of things.
So you want this event fee to fund all of that?
C dot, C dot.
C dot, RTD.
RTD and front range passenger rail district.
The comment I would make on that is that there are people who take public transportation to the ski areas or to... to the ski areas or to Longmont High, and so is the idea then that the ticket?
Yes.
Also gives you public transportation for free?
And that would be have to be part of the wider discussions on how does this work?
Because I would say otherwise, it would be hard to support it because then the people who are doing the right thing by taking public transportation are paying for it twice.
Exactly, unless, and this, this would be part of my discussion, unless they're out of state. For example, we have a huge population, Texans who like to ski, come here and ski, and stock shows. I do think that the residents should get a break, but I'm not so sure. And that would be part of the general discussion, I'm just letting you know that I'm opening this up. And any comments that you have, I would love to hear as part of the large discussion.
Are you again, who you have topics up to?
Dr. Cog.
Dr. Cog.
I've had conversations with the Executive Director, Doug Rex, Ron Papstorf, who is a staff member. Front Range Passenger Rail District, we're going to have it on one of our agendas, the finance. So Commissioner Claire Levy is very interested in it, Ashley Stoltz is very interested in it.
Is there, is there, are you to the point where folks are interested in starting to craft policy language, or is, do you have a point, are you the point person, like who?
I'm the point person to make the noise at this point.
If this, if this were to move forward as an actual bill, where are you in the process to get it?
Just right now in the discussion, but what is it, I forgot the acronym of the Transportation Subcommittee that meets in the summer, is that?
Oh, T L R C.
T L R C, yes.
It meets next Monday, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that is where we want to take it.
Ah, to have a presentation, so that you can educate the community members that this is the first.
This is not the first time people have talked about.
Exactly.
A fee on, well, I wouldn't say a fee on tickets, but, but, but the, but the idea of allowing people with event tickets to ride RTD for free, right? Or, you know, making that, like, that ticket their, their pass, you know, to get to Coors Field or to get to Mile High.
And, and I talked to Deborah Johnson about that, and the districts right now have the ability to do that. It would be a contract between RTD and the Broncos, the Nuggets, and they then would place a fee on their ticket, it would be a contract between that entity.
Right. Otherwise, all events would have this basic fee that would go into this bucket of money that was specifically to fund these projects.
Yes.
Whether individual venues or whatever, that would be separate.
It's a, it's a, it's a different idea of a related one.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just beginning, I know it'd probably take a year, a minimum, to discuss it, to work it out, et cetera.
Sure, committee, how many meetings are you going to have?
Are you on?
I think there's three, I'm on T L R C, yeah. I will not be at the first meeting, I apologize, I have a personal obligation.
Well, is your summer agenda full though?
No, no, we can't.
Yeah.
So.
So can you and I meet separately?
Sure.
Because you can, you can coach me, but I don't do this.
Oh. I don't know because the Transportation Committee, not person staffer, has switched over right at the end of the session, like she left right at the end of the session.
That, okay, that would be the person to look at.
Exactly, I have to find, I don't, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out.
I think we will.
Yeah.
Okay. You have a person in here that doesn't get it.
Great.
No, we need something, we just can't keep going raising taxes and not getting what we raise, we pay for, so.
The other thing that we did, and I probably segues into another thing on your agenda, like it came up in the land use bill, but it came up in other bills as well.
Yes.
Is really trying to get the state, by the state, I mean, the executive branch, to focus on ensuring that transportation investment was going to the communities that are doing the work on affordable housing. So seeing triangle of a housing, transportation, and jobs.
Exactly.
Right? Look at the communities that are doing the work on affordable housing, Longmont, Groomfield, you know, you see them all around. Let's make sure that state investment in transportation and jobs are going to those communities. And as we look at programs for affordable housing, let's make sure that they're going to where the jobs are and where the transportation is, and like, let's see it as, as a pyramid that needs to be built together. And so, I, I just want you to know that we're, we're championing those, those causes.
And this was actually triggered me because in the Dr. Cog meeting, when, of course, everybody discussed two thirteen, and were, was upset for very different reasons, but it was brought up that we all know that Governor Polis is going to bring us back, so how can we work with him? So my idea, it really is, and, and Dr. Cog is more interested in transferring development on this proposition, how can we help him fund it? How can we show him how to fund it, rather than be against it all the time? And so, this, this is just an idea, you know, and I think of all the money that C dot needs to put into I seventy and to, and I twenty-five, they dropped that because they don't have the money, and I think.
I do, yeah, I just learned this week that it is coming back, though smartly so, it'll be four or five bills rather than what it was because that is part of the problem. Like, how do you, how do you digest a hundred line page bill in three weeks?
With seventeen amendments on it.
Yeah, that was, that was ridiculous. So, the, are we on to that one now?
Well, I was like, are we, are we talking about two thirteen now?
Yeah.
Kind of silly.
I just wanted to make that clear that, so we're going to hear about it.
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm glad we're having this meeting now because it's, it is the right time.
Yes, and so maybe a note that next time, when we start doing these meetings, to do them more around this time instead of this session.
Yes, totally taken, absolutely.
And, and you may know that the House Transportation, the House and Local Government Committee really went through two thirteen, we're fine to come. And I do think that that was the biggest takeaway, was not so much that there, there's a problem with trying to encourage denser housing development. And we all, many people, you know, understand the benefits of that from an environmental perspective, a transportation perspective, many through a water and climate perspective. But, but what can we do to incentivize communities to do that? Or reward the ones who are already doing it? And I think that this is where it's most important, is if we're going to have denser housing, we've got to make sure that there's transportation there. You know, I represent Erie, Erie was considered a tier one community on that list. They wanted it to build up dense, but there's no transportation, there's no jobs. Well, then you're just creating a worse problem than you had before. You're just creating denser housing that all has to commute somewhere else by car, right? That's not what we're trying to do at all, right? And so, let's make sure that it's smart and that for the communities like Longmont, Groomfield, others that have already done this work and are already on some transit quotas, let's make sure that they're really getting the services they need to make those effective. And, and better, and, and get the transit that they've promised.
Exactly, and if you're rewarded with, with transit money, what, what is that coming up? I mean, where is that money?
Well, it's the budget that C dot and RTD already have, it's just putting language in place that either, I don't think we can force because of the jurisdictions and so forth, but at least encourages, funnels that, that money towards those communities rather than, you know, sprawl in, in places that aren't doing the work on affordable housing, right? That's, that's what we're trying to avoid. Let's get more stations to Longmont rather than Highlands Ranch, I'm not thinking on Highlands Ranch, but I don't think that they've done nearly as much on affordable housing that Longmont has, and so let's encourage that kind of view.
This also makes me think about Prop one, two, three, and the, the danger that communities like Longmont that are ahead of the curve are potentially not going to be as eligible for that funding is completely unfair. And also needs to be fixed because how, if, you know, we already have, I don't know what the number is of affordable housing units or however it's defined, and they're saying that you have to go up thirty percent per year of the number you're starting with, then the communities that are doing really well and that have been are absolutely penalized.
Can I jump in? Even on top of that, one of the challenges, because we're struggling right now to qualify.
Right.
So, we've got to bring this back to council, and so Denver, Boulder, Longmont, and Fort Collins, we're trying to put in a different number to DOLA.
Yeah.
And, and we were told, we're going to do it the way it's described. And the challenge with that is, what they're doing is they're also, in terms of the three percent growth cap, utilizing naturally occurring affordable attainable housing. And so what it does is, is it actually, when you're building affordable housing and you have naturally occurring, the threshold that we have to hit is, to your point, much different than communities that aren't currently doing.
But they're combining naturally occurring and into the.
Into the total number that you have to hit, and that was, you know, one of the things we're going to send you all separately is, is if, if, if there could be a caveat that's added via legislation that says cities that have been developing affordable housing, that's what it's based on. Because it's all, there's also a disconnect, and they're using naturally occurring affordable housing that is not deep restricted to tell you what you have to build that is deep restricted. So then it becomes an appaliment.
Wow.
And so, you know, we're, we think we found a way to go in that was palatable, but I, I would echo your point, cities that have been building it are in a much different position than cities that haven't.
Is that something that can be fixed in rules through DOLA, or does it need us again?
We think it's going to need you all.
And you think you are seeing a way with language that would work?
We're working well, the cities are talking about potential language where it's impacting us, but right now we're finding a way just to get into the hopper so that we can qualify for it.
And could you say again, Denver, Longmont, Fort Collins?
Boulder, and I'm not sure about Fort Collins, but, yeah, Fort Collins, but.
Okay.
To add just another, you know, complexity to that conversation, something that came up during the Transportation Committee this year that I know affects Longmont as well, is that also the way that we qualify affordable housing programs based on a, a countywide AMI is not appropriate probably anymore for many of our communities, particularly those like Longmont that span two county lines. And I know, like, for instance, again, I was primarily, I was in discussions with Erie at the time, so I had numbers for them, but, you know, Erie's got a very high AMI and high housing prices that go with it. The Boulder AMI was maybe a little bit, just a little bit under what Erie's AMI would be, but the Weld County AMI was significantly lower than that, right? And so, the numbers were all off, and you couldn't really qualify anyone, right, for affordable housing in Erie based on those numbers because there's just not that many people living on forty-two thousand dollars a year in Erie, right? And, and it's not appropriate to the median housing price there either. You're probably seeing those same challenges on the Boulder and the Long County sides of Longmont as well when it comes to qualifying affordable housing. So, that's something that we've asked people to start looking at, like the different advocacy groups, is there, some of that's federally mandated, it could be that federal monies maintain this sort of county AMI, but is there something that we can do that's more nuanced, you know, for statewide funds? And that's something we're going to be looking at as well. Because the mountain communities are getting sort of exceptions written in, right? But it's not looking at the fact that we have those kind of disparities on, on the Front Range as well. Yeah. So.
Right, thank you. Construction defect laws.
That was me.
Okay.
Cool.
Construction defect law, yeah, the CDARA enacted in two thousand and one, right? So obviously, we're mostly concerned about condos and that, the, before the CDARA went into effect, somewhere around the twenty percent level is what we were seeing in condo construction, but we've not seen anywhere more than two to four percent since it's been enacted, if you will. And so, I'm just wondering, I know this is specifically more about, around liability and insurance costs as far as the construction industry is concerned. Condo, though, doesn't necessarily indicate whether it's stacked flats, connected townhomes, or even single family detached.
Right.
Right, and so it's kind of a nebulous term in the sense that it's all, all encompassing multifamily as the laws are written currently, which would be more indicative of stacked flats, if you will, more apartment style. And I'm a big fan of consumer protections, to make very compliment. You know, when we are talking about attainable housing specifically, these for sale products, not just affordable, affordable for sale products as well as attainable or entry level or whatever you want to call it, or course housing, for sale products, condos is the big missing piece of that puzzle that we just can't really attract, if you will, when we're trying to, I mean, we have this huge attainable housing package, we've obviously been very robust in our affordable housing initiatives as well. And so, this has been one of the biggest hurdles to maybe addressing that missing middle, as the popular term.
And where, is it simply that you think the definition of condo needs to be rewritten? Is that the issue?
Either remove maybe, or, or utilize similarly to even how townhomes or, or row homes are, are considered in construction defects. But I know that there's a, a sector, I think my cousin is Senator Julie Gonzalez, just for being a full disclosure, that she's actually pushing a little bit harder for more consumer protection of that concept, where even single family detached residential would be subject to the same kind of insurance and liability issues that condos currently are, and which could be, you know, a little bit troublesome.
So, you gave that, that piece of data that, were they seeing up to upwards of twenty percent claims back in the?
No, no, they're building about, the portfolio of, of new construction was about twenty percent condos.
Condos back then, and now it's much lower.
Now, like, two to four percent.
So all of these consumer protection, construction defect laws that have gone into effect over the time, what I'm hearing is that the, the builders and the developers, it hasn't reflected in their, in lower insurance cost for them.
Yet.
Where, yet?
Well.
It's like, will it? You know, because you would think that if indeed the claims are decreasing and you've got all these protections in place, if that is still a barrier for developers and builders? Are you, are you seeing that?
It's a scale, scalability issue. For instance, let's say you're in Denver and you can build a fifteen story condo complex, that's a scalability issue, you can eat that, not eat it, but you can absorb that, you know, you can spread the liability and insurance costs amongst that unit, that many units. Here in Longmont, we currently have some high restrictions, and, and, you know, those, those kinds of issues create that hurdle as well because they can't make the scalability to a point where it becomes financially feasible.
Yeah, you don't have, off the top of your head, an area statute that this, that this exists in? I could all look up.
The, the area statute, like?
Like, the number of.
The actual number of it? It's been amended multiple times, so, I think last time it was amended was twenty seventeen, what I read. But it was, it was enacted in two thousand and one, and CDARA is all I can remember off the top of my head.
I'll find it.
I think part of it, and we've talked about this, so in terms of what we're doing with affordable and attainable, we're now looking at developing for sale product and partnering in a public-private partnership, and so. Um, in partnering in a public-private partnership and so, um, and one of the projects that we're looking at, the, the insurance cost added about three hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars to the pro forma.
To what?
To the pro forma.
I don't understand.
Took the financials in terms of building it, in terms of
Per entire project?
No, 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 to, to the overall pro forma for the entire project. But when you're trying to bring affordable housing and attainable into it, your margins are tight. And, and so that's the point that Mayor Berthin was making is it just presses it in a different way. And, you know, as, as we've talked about it in our programs, and that's on townhomes, that's on attached products. Um, from a city perspective and the development of affordable attainable, and this is us saying it as a co-developer, we would be hard-pressed to say we would want to step in or get the council to step in to a condo-style development because of the risk that's associated with it.
Yeah.
And I think the challenge is, you all have been hearing from the builders and the developers, I think cities own some of this too, and my colleagues own this, where we've got to step in and kind of go, here's what the impact is to us and how we do this. Uh, but, you know, it definitely moves the needle in the opposite direction when we're trying to look at providing affordable attainable.
So, which is, comes back to one, two, three also, like if you can't access that funding bucket, it, it's just one more pressure on being able to, to do this. And it's unfairly so.
And I agree, I mean, we all agree in consumer protection and there's a need for this. You know, in my past life, I was in depositions for a week on a construction
Yeah.
I just think similar to what we're seeing in the public safety where people find a way to monetize something. People have found a way to monetize it and it, it's just another barrier.
Everyone else carries the burden.
But I am, no offense to the legal department, but specifically the, you know, legal industry has found a way to monetize the construction defect law. Yeah, which has then exacerbated the problem, as you can imagine. So. Not trying to beat up.
That's another conversation to bring up, uh, in front of the TLRC this summer, are you ready?
No.
All right. Let's go.
It's, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's as simple as carving out condos.
You're the one.
Jennifer, you're the one.
It's all good.
Hey, you can have one. Well, get, honey, do you have ten days in a row?
I have no idea, I'll find out.
Because it would have gotten to you by this. Yeah. But I don't know my idea. Might be.
But, yeah, reducing the ability for litigation would probably be the, the factor that would shift that conversation.
Yeah.
It's come up before.
Right, I'm sure, I'm sure.
So, I, yeah, and I don't know precisely where the conversation is on it, but, uh, yeah.
But, yeah, as I'm sure, uh, as far as two, two one three was considered, it was just too big, right? As, as we've all talked about piecemealing, it seems to be probably a little more problematic.
Too late also.
Also too.
And that, that's more process, not, not, not necessarily talking about specific parts of the bill, it's process.
In a way it was kind of fun though, I literally sat with my aide, like with the entire bill spread across the table, amendment by amendment, like writing in what the language, but it was coming to committee, we had to. I was like, what does this trying to say and what is it doing in a hundred and fifty-five pages, like all over the table and
Actually, it was not fun after that. He did get us talking. What does this really say?
Well, and so similarly, the, the last agenda item there.
HOAs.
Yeah, HOAs. Councilman Warren, I know, has, uh, spoken on record at head city council saying that that was a big piece of two one three that she really liked.
Yes.
And, and it was something that I was also interested in too.
The HOAs.
Yeah.
Tell me what you liked about what it said on HOAs.
Well, you know, Longmont, as you know, has done a lot of progressive things with land use. Um, and also with land management around things like pesticides and ziriskate and, and things like that. But mostly the land use, we want all of those big yard, windy street neighborhoods be able to have ABUs. And
I really like that part too.
Yeah, they should be able to have ABUs. And they've got all of this bluegrass. You know, restrictions.
Bust down.
Yeah, you have to have, you have to have bluegrass and they have all this bluegrass, you know? And meantime, our parks department has, has done all kinds of wonderful things with native turfs. And, uh, and native flowering plants. I was just up to, to, um, uh, to Northern Water and looked at bears, ziriskate gardens. Which is just a delight to, to be in, but the HOAs are just same and when they ought to be changing. And so all of the things that we're learning how to do with Longmont's terrain and climate are, are being frustrated by the HOAs.
And the, the, uh, the bill that we did get through, um, certainly this, it's not as strong as you would want to like make them do this, but what it did, the water-wise landscaping was to tell HOAs what they do have to do is have ready drought-tolerant plans, plant plans and, and designs that can be modified, but they have to have three ready-made plans. Because what we were seeing is that homeowners that really want to go there were hitting walls and hitting obstacles and so many of these HOA boards are volunteers. And they don't have the time to figure out if this is going to work or not, so they're just getting denied. And what they will now have to do, and there's lots of resources that are being directed towards the HOA boards to make sure that we're not leaving them out in the cold to go figure this out on their own. There's, there's nonprofits, um, Resource Central and others that can help them with these three ready-made plans. And it specifically calls out, you can no longer require this eighty percent grass thing, that has to go. Um, but it's going to make it easier for the homeowners, it's going to make it easier for the HOAs to make this happen. Um, we didn't even get a lot of pushback on allowing vegetable gardens in the front yard, but still have the ability to oversee the aesthetics of what that looks like, so, um, the, the HOAs worked with us through that and we're on board and I'm already getting questions, um, from our HOA about how, how to do that. Um, I have another question about HOA, so it's not on here, but I'm having an issue with the sign. This is totally like, so while I've got you, I don't know if there's a timer on this meeting, but, um, I, I need some clarification on, um, the Longmont municipal code about yard signs. Um, I actually went to the municipal code this afternoon thinking, okay.
Sign you into my favor.
It's going to be here. Okay, um, so the bill from, is this okay if I do this?
Oh, absolutely.
Vectoring off here, the bill from whatever year it was, twenty twenty-one or
Yours was twenty twenty election.
That's, that let, told HOAs that you are allowed to have a policy around fuck signs, about the number, the size, the, you know, whatever, um, and, um, it has to be content neutral or whatever, but you are, as an HOA, are allowed to have your own policy. My HOA was looking at that thinking, well, we want to write our own policy, but now we're running up against what the Longmont municipal code says about signs and there's not as much flexibility, I guess, from what, for instance, if the Longmont municipal code on yard signs didn't exist, the HOA would be able to say, um, we will allow, um, you know, up to, you may have two signs in your yard at any time. Um, in September and October, every year, you can have up to six signs in your yard. Like you can't tie it to an election, you can't tie it to any specific, but they're not allowed to do that because of what the Longmont municipal code says about, it's only two signs ever. And they are, their attorney is interpreting that as even the little tiny, this home is protected by such and such, you know?
The rings sign?
Rings, you know, security, that little tiny sign counts as one of the signs. And they're, and they're saying, well, if we want to have two signs in our yard during election season, we're going to have to take away the break security sign in order to stay within a long month. So there's this, there's this little bit of like frustration, what do we do? Because it seems like the law statewide was more flexible, but then the city, they have to, the city code counts for everyone.
So I don't know state law, is that the municipal attorney?
Well, it's
Nonprofit, a nonprofit municipal attorney.
I think there is a good measure of discretion and reasonableness during election season. Right? If you see two election signs and a break sign, we've got a lot worse issues.
No, I realize that, they're really trying to play by the rules and so.
And, you know, just as a general matter, Longmont municipal code trumps HOA's restrictions.
Exactly. Not be doing signage, but it's so unhelpful.
What?
HOA should not be enacted in their own sign codes, that's super unhelpful and
Yeah, well.
we would never enforce, we'll only enforce the municipal code.
Well, and that's what I'm going to get back to her on, is that you have to follow Longmont's municipal code, it doesn't matter what the state is allowing in other areas, but then we get back to this, and I realize that we all see more signs than two certain times of the year and nobody has time to go enforce that, like why would you waste your resources? Um, but it's this, this thing about like, what counts as a sign?
And it's complaint-driven.
Yeah.
And we can get in between neighbors because they tell on their neighbor.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe they don't like the sign that's in the neighbor's yard. Or supporting the other candidate.
Right.
So, you know, there's so many variations, but I do think we take a reasonable approach, go with education, uh, use a measure of discretion during election season because we see them everywhere in our right-of-way where they shouldn't be.
Right, right.
And so.
And it's likely that you probably wouldn't count the breaks signs this big up against the bushes.
To, to your point though, by the HOA being silent on the matter, it then falls onto the city for enforcement and that might be better for your HOA too, so they don't worry about it.
To not even have a policy.
Yeah. Don't even worry about it, just because you can, because there's already a city code in place.
Yeah, they do.
It makes no sense.
Resolve yourself of the matter.
Yeah, very good. That, that might
Unless your HOA is like super excited about doing their own enforcement.
No, I think, I think, I think that would give, I think that would actually give her a great relief. You know, if I could say, hey, guess what, you don't even have to write a policy, you could just let it be.
Well, and it's a and it's a really complicated issue because there, on the other side of the spectrum, HOAs that say you can't put any sign up except for during, during election season. This question came to me once because they had a disrespect all signs that you see. And they were deemed by their HOA because they don't allow any sign like that, which
I thought the state law
But the city does.
Correct.
The city allows any signs anytime up to two, anytime.
And there's a restricted, that's a different question, but
And HOA could be more restrictive.
HOA could be more
Why would you want to?
Right.
Also state law specifically addresses a lot about it.
Yeah, they like
Consider it free to speak.
Well, it does say, it tells you
On the topic of HOA enforcement, one of the things that's happening this summer is we're kicking off the HOA task force. That's part of, one of the bills that I passed. And so, um, I don't know who's going to be on it yet, I'm certainly hoping to be on it, but regardless, if you've got comments or thoughts or questions or concerns, um, of course I encourage you to watch the schedule and participate in the meetings if you can, but also if you just want to type up an email and send it, I'm trying to, you know, people are just, as a bill sponsor, people are just writing me their concerns and so I'm just trying to compile those to have for the task force and I'm happy to add your comments. And the comments of any of your constituents, um, to the list. So if you get complaints about HOAs, feel free to forward them along and also be sure to, if there is a complaint to be had, they could, there's a, there's a website, uh, that DORA.
DORA.
Not DOLA, DORA, uh, it's the HOA Center, uh, runs that they compile complaints through. And I'm sure that we will, the task force will be reviewing a lot of those complaints as well.
Okay.
Thank you, that's important.
Uh, the HOA task force will kick off in August, but there will be a metro district-specific task force that kicks off later in the year, I think. Hoping.
Okay. Okay, um, maybe that, you had said that there were
Ice cream.
What's my heard? Bill specific to, um, and I don't know who, uh, that rep operated this?
Oh, uh, some of these at our, uh,
Okay.
Public safety
Okay, I'll have to go back and see who this one's I wrote the numbers down, okay.
I think that you signed off, but you didn't author it, I mean.
Oh, everybody signs on everything. But I, I know, I, I, you know, if I put my name on it, you're absolutely right.
No, but, but I do, I would like her to be, uh, told what this was all about, what our objections were, what we need changes. And if it could be amended this year, that would be amazing.
Yes. I'm not promising yes, but I
But I do know you listened to it, so.
I do, I listen and I, and I, uh, process.
Yeah.
And, uh, you're right about this job being hard, but I don't think it's as hard as your job. And I would never want any of your jobs. I'm just saying. But, yeah.
Mayor, I did want to mention that the Waterwise bill that Representative Harmon is discussing is one that you all supported and you really
Right.
Yes, I love, I thought that was a great bill, after but What?
What'd you say?
Joking, I'm joking.
What?
After I did. Yeah, it was kind of a, it's all right.
I'm sorry, I can't help myself.
Some things
Representative Harmon.
Like we were saying, we have to laugh sometimes.
I don't think, I don't think I saw you laughing in the session. So this is what summer looks like.
I was crying. Yeah.
Well, I think this was great, thank you so much for your time, are there any comments?
I wrote this public comments.
We will plan to do this again with this timing.
Absolutely, this really works.
I do want to apologize for disrespecting your time by being colossal late. You probably are just glad I didn't have my mouth in here more of the time, but it was
Glad you're here, we're glad to see you, we're glad you're here.
The other thing I would offer up is on the items we talked about, especially affordable and attainable housing. Because we are now also in the role as the housing authority in our programs. Our staff will be available to, and if there's questions or if you want any feedback, I will ensure that we're available to step in, answer whatever we can.
That's great, thank you.
So this might be a good time to see, should we combine the commissioner and, um, the rep dinners so that the county hears what the local issues are, would that be helpful? Can we think about that before the summer is close?
County dinners are their invitation to you.
Oh, that's right.
Commissioners are the ones that are sponsoring, not that we couldn't invite county commissioners to this meeting, of course.
Yeah, I had that conversation with two of the county commissioners earlier this week, the same, same thing. And I'm meeting with their, their legislative liaison, I think, next week. But it is, and the same thing I'm telling them, like what, what can I do to help and the earlier the better because, I haven't got a single bill title yet.
You probably have.
But I, I'm, I'm kind of in this waiting, learning, listening, mulling over stage and this is, um, this is when
The ideas come forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, this works. So we can watch closer this session, so that next summer, when you're hosting this.
Right. Right. Well, we'll see, this'll be an interesting session.
Yeah.
Did the special session get called?
No.
Not.
Not like you've heard, it's not my honor.
No, there's, there was a call for one.
Oh, I know.
Put out new things.
No.
Well, if there's nothing else, I think we should, I'd like to say adjourn, but we're not really in that type of meeting, just call. Say thank you very much. I actually forgot about that. That looks like that chair that Kevin tossed in.
We'll go yell at that empty chair.
And thank you, thank you for the meal, too, it was really nice.